My name is Dr. Gladys Ayala. I am the Vice Chancellor for New York Medical College-wide Student Affairs, responsible for all the student support services on campus. And I'm also the Senior Associate Dean for Student Affairs in the School of Medicine. I'm glad you all came out because we are going to introduce to you a whole new student information system and portal. A process that has taken two years in the making, and we are going to be going live very soon, and so it will impact your lives while you're a student at New York Medical College. So what I'd like to do to introduce to you David Rab, who is the Executive Vice President of Tuero College and University System. We are a member of the Tuero College System, and so all of the Tuero Colleges will be going live with this new system and portal. He's also accompanied by Mr. Matthew Benilla, who is the Vice President of Student Administrative Services for Tuero College and University Systems. And today, we're going to present the system, how we got here, and when it's going live, and how it's going to help students and faculty here on campus.
Good afternoon, everybody. I know you all kind of sat in back, but it's not a class. I'm not going to call on you. I just want, I'm really delighted to be here. I'm delighted to have the opportunity to be hosted by New York Medical College and to have an opportunity to speak with you. We have been going around, Matt Benilla will be speaking to you later, I'm just the warm-up act. Matt Benilla and I have been going around to the various campuses around the Tuero System, introducing the new student module that's going to be coming out live, starting beginning of April, and then, and being implemented over the next few months. And we're delighted to be here today to explain this to the New York Medical College student body as well as faculty, because I think everybody is going to be, is going to be very affected by this, but hopefully pleased by it as well. And Matt will actually show you some screenshots of what the new system is going to look like. And I believe it was demoed actually last week to a student group who really were very pleased and thrilled with it, so I'm hoping that we'll be able to get that excitement and enthusiasm out here as well. So what, the system is being called Tuero One. You may have heard Banner, you may have PeopleSoft now. Tuero One is our system. It is a system that's being used across the Tuero College and University System at every campus, and I'll talk a little bit about how we actually have gotten to this point. But in fact, we, this has been, as Dr. Ayala said, a 22-month project. Actually, I think we're about 18 months into it. We have another few months to go. We started by implementing a whole new financial system, which a lot of people here have used already. People, faculty have gotten, and then, and then we put in, in January of this year, a new HR and payroll system, through which people have been putting in their time sheets and have been paid. And now, in April, we're going to be doing the, the student system. So I just want to start, I'm not going to harp on this too much, but I just want to let you know, reassure you, that this is not just a Tuero initiative, this is a New York Medical College initiative as well. The New York Medical College Administration, Dr. Halpern, Dr. Kadish, the New York Medical College Board, everyone, from the day we, Tuero and New York Medical College joined together, ever since then, there was a recognition that there were real synergies to be achieved, both academically and operationally between the institutions. And both Boards and both administrations have really kind of been hoping that, that we would move forward on that. So Tuero One is one of the things that came out of that hope, to try and make things work better, not only across the system, but even within New York Medical College. Some of the key objectives. So when we, a few months, about two years ago, when we first started this project, or before we started the project, and I'm not going to go into all the details, because a lot of it doesn't apply to many of you, but we found that there were multiple operational administrative systems here. There was one financial system, which was archaic, and was not going to be supported much longer by the vendor. We found PeopleSoft as a student system and HR system. We found a financial aid system that was separate and distinct, and we found multiple learning management systems, in the School of Medicine, Graduate School of Basic Medical Sciences, and School of Health Science and Practice. And what we said was, that these systems don't talk to each other very well, and as I said, some of them are archaic and not being, may not be supported in the future, and we are not able to serve our students and faculty well, because sometimes the data from this system doesn't really get over into that system, or we had to create special routines that would take this out, and we'd have to run it from this system and put it into that system. And what we wanted to do for the whole Tuero System and for New York Medical College, was to put in place a single state-of-the-art, integrated administrative system, where the minute you register for a course, you're already, your data has been shifted already to the learning management system, your, your account, your bill is automatically updated, so that you can pay it right away in TINT, that you could apply for financial aid online and accept financial aid, and that that financial aid would be reflected in your bill automatically. We wanted everything to work seamlessly. And we wanted to try to work with a single sign-on, which basically means you sign on once and you have access to everything within that, and you don't have to sign on to different The holistic chart of accounts I'll skip about, because that's about finance, but we also wanted streamlined processes. We really wanted things to work much more simply. There was a lot of manual effort that needed to go on here. Sometimes you're sent to the registrar's office, and then to the financial aid office, and then you go to the birth star, and then you come back to registrar, and then you go to, we wanted to get rid of all of that, and make it really streamlined, so that you could do everything real easily. And we wanted you to be able to do it non-stop. That's a concept that we've, are promulgating in the Student Services area. Basically, what it means is, we want you to be able to focus on your studies, and on having fun in life, or whatever else you do in life. We don't want you to have to worry about, or focus on, or spend a lot of time on registering, and flying for financial aid, and going from one office to the other office. We want you to be able to do all that administrivia whenever you want, from wherever you want, on whatever device you want. That is really the objective. And I think we're getting there. I think we're going to be pretty close to it, in what we're about to show you. We wanted enhanced services to employees. We wanted integration with Blackboard Learning Management System, which basically means the second you register, you have access to your learning management system data. And we want enhanced advisement capabilities. But we want to enhance the ability of, of students to know, the minute they walk in the door here, what they have to take in order to graduate X-years from now. And to be aware of, here are the things I must take, here are the electives I can take, and to be able to work with their advisors very closely in planning their career path, their, their studies path, that relates to the career, their careers, obviously. So I think we're, we, what we have, what we are putting in place will have that ability, and I, we're very excited about it. And enhanced reporting that, that we are, hope to have. Again, I'm not going to go into all of this, but basically what I, I just want to give you the magnitude of this. New York Medical College had multiple systems that didn't talk to each other. Tuero had multiple systems that didn't talk to each other. And I think the last two bullets are really very important. We have, Tuero had a lot of campuses that grew up kind of independently, not going to the whole history of Tuero. California Campus, our Nevada Campus, our Law Center, everybody, for a long time, was basically told, "Go forth and prosper." And so, a lot of, a lot of the schools grew, grew in a silo, but, and, and New York Medical College clearly had 150-year history, had its own way of doing things, but, but I, the management and the boards of both school's systems decided that, you know, we really want to try and do things as operationally efficiently as possible. So the first part of this project, actually, was getting teams from around the entire Tuero System, including New York Medical College, to sit down and say, "Okay, this is how we've done X. This is how we've registered. This is how we've done financial aid. This is how we've done payroll in the past." And they all came to an agreement, before we started a touch of programming, they came to an agreement about, what is the best way to do this going forward? What's the best way for our students? What's the best way for our faculty? What's the best way for our staff? And amazingly, and I, this really is amazing, and a credit to all the people who worked on this, they actually did come to agreement. Now, there are nuances, where they, where there need to be nuances. New York Medical College clearly has its history, and clearly has certain needs that were, have to, have been, and were accommodated, but I would say, for the most part, we are starting to do things the same way, the best way, because part of what we did was, we looked at best practices. We looked around the country, and tried and find the best practices that are being used out there, and incorporated into the way we do that, because we want to do the best for our schools. So we went through a process, I won't go through the whole background again, but we went through a very rigorous process, to see what system would work for the entire Tuero College and University System, as well as the individual schools. And we chose Banner by Alucion, and I'm going, this is probably going to be one of the last times I'm going to say the word Banner. Banner is a shell of a product that is created by Alucion, which the schools have to configure to their own needs. And our team, our implementation team, really took those best practices that I just talked about, talked about, and translated it into Banner, creating what we are calling Tuero One. But Alucion actually supports 1,500 educational institutions around the country. It is committed to this product. It is committed to Tuero. They are very aggravated by Tuero, and how much we've pushed them, but pleased by Tuero, because we have helped them think forward, in terms of our own demands and our own desires to do more with their products. So it's been a very good relationship, and I think, I think they're going to, they're going to take a lot of what we want, in terms of moving the product forward. I just wanted to say, once again, I mentioned the project team. It has been a terrific effort, a tremendous effort. If you think about taking all student data from beginning of time, and putting it into the new system, and cleaning it up, and making sure that it's accurate, and taking all personnel data, and all financial data. It's a, it was a tremendous effort, and in codifying the system, making it work the way we want it to work, was a tremendous effort. And the Tuero team generally worked spectacularly, unbelievably well as a team, put in tremendous hours. But here at New York Medical College, it was a particular challenge, because while we were doing all this, the same people, or many of the same people, were getting ready for the LCME visit, which was also successful. And so, my hat goes off, my yarmulke goes off to, to everyone here at New York Medical College. They are listed here on this list. These are the New York Medical College people who were part of the team. I want to point out that Michael Rogavin and Ben Watson were members of the Steering Committee as well, and these were members of the team, and they deserve a tremendous round of thanks, and I would like them to please stand up for a second, and get everybody's applause and appreciation. So with that, I, with that introduction, that's kind of the, the context and the background, and with that, now you're going to really see what you're going to get.
For starters, I want to reiterate what David said, and especially near and dear to my heart, is the student team here, who, I can honestly assure you, from a faculty perspective, from a student perspective, they have been fighting on your behalf, every second of the day, 24 hours a day, for the last two years, to make sure that you have a product that you can be proud of, and that you have a product that will make your lives a whole lot easier. At a very, very, very high level, we're out to accomplish one thing, very simply. We want to provide the best service of any institution in the country. Now, as an, as an institution, we have, we have a ways to go, in terms of competing across the nation, in terms of service, but we believe that this system will put us in a position to grow, to continuously get feedback from students, faculty, and staff, and to build something that we feel will differentiate us across the country as a number-one service provider in all of higher education. Anytime, anywhere, access to your information. Now, that's something that, in this day and age, everyone requires, whether you're going to an airline app, or you're dealing with a credit card, or any type of customer service business. You require the ability to be device-agnostic, and the ability to communicate when and when you want, where you want, with, with whomever you want. Another thing that we're trying to do, system-wide, is break down barriers between units. When you have questions about admissions, or about financial aid, registrar, birth star, you have a question. You don't think about an individual department. So what we're trying to do is break down all those barriers across the system, between individual departments, and just answer your questions. Or, in many cases, if you have multiple questions, kind of gather up the answers to those questions, and get back to you in an expedited fashion. From your perspective, how is this going to really impact you? And I have to, I have to thank some of the folks up front who helped me with some of these slides. They say the number-one biggest item that's going to affect your life is having everything under one roof. So you're going to have your library resources, your various LMS systems, Blackboard, LCMS+ Moodle, the e-portfolio system that you guys have, and the new innovations tool that you guys use. It'll be all in one portal. And over the course of time, we are working as a system to try to automate, and to try to put single sign-on in place, so that eventually, you'll use one code for everything. That's going to take us some time to get to, but at least on day one, everything will be in one location. And I think when we show it to you, you're going to be really impressed with what it looks like, and I think you're going to be really relieved. From a student perspective, how can you be able to go to a single location to see your class schedule, to be able to request an academic transcript, to be able to update information, and actually interact with information, rather than just updating your contact information? Some of you, depending on who you are, what programs you're in, some of you will be able to register online. Some of you will be able to add and drop courses online, without having to talk or deal with anyone. From a student's accounts perspective, someone told me once that you actually have to physically come to campus to, to actually hand in checks. You'll have a complete online billing suite, where you can handle it wherever you are. We'll get into details about that. From a financial aid award perspective, I know, working with Tony, he's tried to provide the best customer service possible, but with this tool, we'll be allowed to package faster, in that Alucion and Banner gives us the actual criteria and the compliance aspects of every year's updates faster than any other system out there. So we can get you this information faster. We're also working from a budget perspective, to try to get things moving forward, so that we can put things together for you faster, and that we can process you in a way that you'll be comfortable with. From an NYC publication standpoint, once we get into the portal, it's very important to know that whether you're a student or a faculty member, that you'll be able to have information that's specific just to your population. So students in groups could have one, faculty council, faculty senate, they could have notes and information that's posted that just faculty can see. So that's something you've never really had here before in that regard. This is a little look at what, what it will, what will look like. As you can see here, we have your learning management systems all lined up here. We have your, your schedule. It's all very smooth, it's all very intuitive, and also, it's also for New York Medical College. Across the system, each of the campuses has their own, with the information that's specific to them. From a registration perspective, can you imagine just logging into a system and being able to easily look up your courses, add or drop classes, looking up the course catalogs and, and the holes in a very easy, seamless fashion? I think that's something that's going to, that's going to make a lot of difference, and hopefully save you a lot of time. As you can see, from this particular view, you come in, you can see everything to do with viewing your grades, you can view your test scores, you can see the individual aspects of your program, you can request transcripts, you can see everything that you would need to see, from a perspective of, a service perspective, in that you have your library resources, you have Oasis, and, and all your academic support units. It's very clean, it's very simple. Again, I mentioned before, we talked about finance, you can see TouchNet up there. TouchNet will allow you to go in online, at any time, and set up payment plans. And when your payment plans are updated, or you make a payment, it will update your system in real time. We're working very, very closely between the registrar's office, the birth star's office, and financial aid, to make sure everything happens at once, so that your actual bills look very streamlined, very clean, and very easy to understand, so you don't have to waste a lot of time on those particular items. From a financial aid perspective, I know that in the past, you've had various systems that you used to go into. We're only taking the first step here, where you'll be able to go into the system, you'll be able to accept and decline your aid, you'll be able to understand what the, what the individual awards are for. But as we continue to grow, and, and grow into Banner as a whole, you'll be able to eventually scan documents, so you won't have to deliver paperwork to the financial aid office. You can do it from home, and never actually have to come here if you don't want to. From a 1098T perspective, I know that the Tuero System was taking a ton of phone calls on being able to get the 1098T. Now, we can go in here, we can click on it, and we can get our 1098Ts. This is the financial aid tab, the reason we showed it, because we want to show how clean it was. You can see your award, your eligibility, your status, the federal shopping sheet, and then you can email us right from within here, to, to ask any questions that you might have. From a faculty perspective, your lives are going to improve as well. Class rosters, you're going to have real-time access, reflecting up to the minute add drop. So it's very important that, that you actually know who's in your class. So someone adds or drops, you will know it in real time. My understanding is that there's paper rosters now, so that's going to be a dramatic improvement. And I'll show you some screens on how easy it is to get to that information. Grade entry, again, my understanding, that is a paper process now. You will, in the future, be able to do it anytime, anywhere, via automated submission, which is, which is a big deal. That's, if you're a faculty member, you have to like that. Office hours. Within your portal, as a faculty member, it will allow you to adjust your office hours, so that anyone taking your class, or any of the various classes that you teach, it will update it in the students' portal. So you change your office hours in one place, and it permeates and updates in all of your students' classes, they know where they can find you, when, when your office hours are. The faculty schedule is also in there, and again, we should start to build from the ground up publications, such as faculty senate notes, or other things that you guys might be interested in. And the great thing about starting now is, we can start at the, at the grass level, so we can build this however you want going forward. On April 4th, we're going to start with the bare minimum, but again, this is a whole idea, to have this evolve over time. From a faculty member's perspective, if you look over here, you see some classes, this is how it'll, how it'll look in terms of my classes, right here is your class roster. You just simply click on that, you'll see everybody in your class. Over here, you just click on that, you put in your grades right there, and then over here is all the details as it pertains to your class, and really, right over here, where there's a little email envelope, you can actually mass email everyone in your class from right there, or select individuals from your roster that you could email individually. I feel that that's a nice improvement as well. We've got a quick helpful link tool here, about how to set your office hours, and how to, and how to handle grades. And again, you'll be able to go right into your LMS, depending on which one you use for which program, they're all in there as of, as of right now. But as you can see, it's, it's very clean, it's very easy to understand, and it's all in, it's all in one place. Folks here that are advisors, how many, how many advisors are in the room? Anybody an advisor? Are you also faculty, or just, so you're advisors and faculty? Great. So what's important to know from an advisor perspective is, that Banner has the number-one degree evaluation tool out there, called DegreeWorks. So a student, as they come in, first day of class, they'll understand every class that they need to take. The advisor will understand at the same time, they'll be seeing both sets of information in real time. The advisor will be able to, with the press of a couple buttons, understand everything there is to know about the student. And he holds on account, the contact information, the schedule, and it will really allow an advisor to quickly analyze and quickly work with students, to provide you the best possible product. In terms of what we could do with advisors, you can see advising listings, you can look up classes, you can search catalogs. Across the Tuero System, advisors work in different ways. Sometimes there's just advisors, sometimes there's advisors that are also faculty members, sometimes there's a one-to-one relationship between advisors and, and then at some of our campuses, we have, you can go see any advisor you want, whenever you want. So it's important that we remain flexible in being able to set this up, and we can. And based on your school and your setup, that's how we'll have set this up, but going forward, if we evolve, and again, not only here, but across the system, we can change it any which way that we like. This is one of the quick, quick screens that Jennifer wanted me to show, and I think it really does tell from the, from the perspective of an advisor. Look how clean that is. You can see the student ID, you can see their PIN number for registration, the, the student information by clicking on the, on the tab, the whole degree evaluation, the transcript, the test scores, the holes, all in one place. I think that's pretty clean, I think it's pretty nice, I think the advisors are going to really like it. In terms of training opportunities, this is a tentative training date, April 6th. What I want to say about training from a faculty and staff perspective, don't pay attention to what's on the slide, if you ever need more training, whether it be group training, individual training, we will be dealing with that, and Student Services will be happy to help you, will be happy to set up additional events for you, anytime that you like. But we're hoping, from a student perspective, and also from a faculty perspective, that this is basically very, very simple and intuitive. You should be able to go on this, similarly, you go on many other tools, technological tools out there, and be able to understand it on your own. I think that's the power of this. If you have any questions, concerns, we have built a non-stop, David talked about a non-stop help desk call center, and we've partnered with our folks, with the Student Services folks at NYMC. We have one email address, one phone number, that you can send any of your questions or your concerns, and you'll get a ticket. We, we promised a 24-hour, one-business-day response time to your ticket. We also feel that being able to provide this online presence for you, anywhere you are, in conjunction with the on-the-ground presence, will really separate the service that the institution is able to provide you. So if you ever have any questions or any concerns, or you have any, any type of student-related issues, you can email nonstop@tuero.edu. I'm going to take a few minutes, and any questions out there? Anybody curious about anything? Is this something that you like? Is this something that you, you're excited about, or?
There are, in, in PeopleSoft, there were certain reports, and I assume they will eventually be replicated, or something similar, in, in Banner System. That would be of use to advisors. For example, a, a report that listed all an advisor's advisees with some information about them, all at once, what courses they were taking that semester, or their grades and so on. Will, will this system have a place for those reports to be available, not just individual students, but?
Sure. So the institution has a tool called Cognos, that we've also implemented, that will be able to do all of our individual report writing. What we've done is, we've gone around from campus to campus, and we've talked to all the folks about getting base-level reports that we need. One of the things that you mentioned that I like, is the fact that you have advisor reports that you think are beneficial to your community. I'm willing to bet that those advisor reports are also beneficial to other people across the system. So what we're trying to do is, trying to figure out what the top-level reports are. We can always build and continue to add more, but also share those reports with everybody, so that, you know, we can basically continuously have an environment where information is flowing back and forth, and that we're not writing the same report 17 different ways across the system. So the answer, the, the short answer to your question is yes. Report writing is going to take time to build out. We're going to certainly start by putting in the reports that we need to, you know, handle the state and the, and the federal requirements, in terms of the various things that we have to report on, but, but the answer to your question is yes.
And then, and then the, similar kind of questions. You, you mentioned publications, and then I, the publications I saw were things like catalogs, and sort of fixed publications, but, but there are other things, which I thought you mentioned, things like minutes from senate meetings, or council meetings and stuff. Will, will there be a place for those to appear, here, where faculty, or faculty in this case, could, could find them through the?
Absolutely, and one of the things that we kind of want to talk about, that'll lead into this, is we've established a governance committee across the system, with NYMC representation. And I think it's important that every community, in terms of, for example, this faculty population might want to post different things than the, the faculty population in Nevada or California. So the answer is yes. We encourage that, and we're hoping to actually create an environment that fosters continuously building those things. So yes, we want that to happen, and we want to, we want to get that going soon.
As you saw, Matt, it went pretty quickly, but each campus has its own area that it can do its own thing in and decide what it wants in those publication areas. And it can restrict it by who they want to see it. So if a student can see one thing, faculty can see something else and so on and so forth. The governance committee, what we're trying to do is to, when ideas come up that may have cross-system implications, we would kind of raise that up and see what we can do for everybody. Oasis is a good example also. We have a third year of the rotation matching system. There are five medical schools. We have the Alabamian, we have the Fordillo School. Everybody has the rotation matching issue and maybe can find a way to come and do it. So that's part of what we'll be on time to do. And also, just to get onto the reports, you know, one of the things we want to try and avoid, or try and enhance, so Matt alluded to it, different schools have been used to doing things very differently, frankly. But as I think we did with the functional, I think we could probably do that with reports. We did it with some student services operational reports. New York Medical College had this list of reports and each of our student services areas around the system had their own reports that they liked. We had everybody sit down and basically come and cut a list, I think it was like 17 reports, to a list of 15 reports that everybody could use and met everybody's needs. So I think that kind of thinking will be really good.
I think in addition to that, in terms of sharing best practices, the advising setup here might be something, again, that we might be lacking on, on different campuses. And so, some of the reports that you have right now, that I'm very interested in, they might not exist someplace else, so I'll be very eager to get those out. Also, another thing that you could do to help us out is, if you really like what's going on here and actually you get on there and you see this is a seamless experience, we can continue to build that for you, but we need feedback. There are things called workflows regarding automated processes, like that are paper processes now that we want to continue to build. If there are processes as it pertains to NYMC that we want to bubble up to the top, let your students' folks know, let your HR folks know, or your finance folks know, and that will bubble up through the governance committee. So every year, we put together the project plan of what we're going to tackle next. We make sure that that's on the list. And we want to put it on a list of most impactful first. So we do need your feedback on that. And again, that's your constructive criticism, but also what's working well for you. I think that, I think it's very important that we have an open dialogue and we're honest with ourselves about, you know, what we need to continue to improve upon, but also how far we've come and what you have now that you either didn't have or that we can continue to build out.
So, just allow the students and faculty to look at the calendar so that I'm sure to a company or like a club they're having events or things like that. Will this allow a calendar to list those events?
I'm going to turn that over to Jennifer.
Should we have a new calendar on the website? It's new from the, and yes, you can add events and calendar and stuff. And that calendar is not only on the NYMC website, it's also in the portal. So when you go to the homepage of the portal, you'll see the calendar here on the homepage of our website. There's a calendar there as well. And so, again, the calendar is nice because it has people who add events and add to all the events.
Thank you for the question. Thanks, Jennifer.
So you know how at the end of pharmaceutical advice, there's always that kind of, so I'm going to make the fastest flavor. And that is, as Matt said, you know, if it starts to roll out on the fourth or, and moving forward, things will be added over time. And so, we will have a major communication effort over the next few months. As Matt said, if you don't hear what you want, if you don't know, if you're not getting the information you need or if it's not working where you want it to work, let us know. But I, but I wanted to just, but these processes are going to be rolled out over time. And I ask that you do complain if you need to, but give us, but also kind of a little bit of goodwill, kind of let us get over the hump. We implemented the financial, new financial system and took a few weeks worth to kind of shake out. We implemented the HR pair system, it took a few weeks worth to shake out. We hope not, there was a tremendous amount of effort waiting, but there's a chance it may take a few weeks worth to shake out and a few, and a few months for things to kind of be integrated and roll in. So just bear with us. We do want to hear from you, but also just a bit of encouragement and we'll go a long way for all of us. So I appreciate it very much.
Anybody else? We really thank you for your time. Thanks for coming out. Appreciate it.